Right, good afternoon. I have it at 2:31 on my computer. Welcome to the Decatur County Commissioner's Special Session on September 26, 2025. If y'all can just rise and Doug Westerfeld, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brian, do you want to lead us in prayer?
Sure. Heavenly Father, we thank you for bringing us here this afternoon. We ask you for guidance and wisdom as we make decisions that affect our county and our population. We just thank you for your praise and glory and we just honor you in your name. Amen.
Amen. All right, we'll start first with the Highway Department bids. It looks like total, one, two, three, four, five separate bids. I'd already looked, they are all sealed, so I'm starting first here with Terry Asphalt Materials. All right, so it looks like the request for the quote was on 35,000 gallons of AE-90S for single chip and seal, 67 gallons AE-90S for double chip and seal and dust preventative there, 21,000 gallons. Looks like the total price, if I'm reading this correctly, is, or the total bid is 256,100.
And who is this from?
Terry, Terry Asphalt Materials. The AE-90S for 100,000 gallons is at 2.209 per gallon. The optional AEF 20,000 gallons is at $1.76 per gallon. Tankerly tanker hourly rate beyond two hours to be invoiced in quarter hour increments is $100 per hour.
What was your total?
Total is 256,100. 256,100. Do I need to move those mics any closer? Dave, are you good? Now that I've talked for a couple of minutes? We're good? Okay. I just wanted to make sure since we have new equipment here, so. All right, up next, SC Construction and Materials.
Labor? One for labor. Okay.
SC would be the contractor.
The labor.
So SC for the NDOT 3P chip and seal application is 90 cents per square yard. The NDOT 6P chip and seal application is $1.94 per square yard. And the optional AEF FOG is 90 cents per square yard. So the total on their bid is $216,040. $216,040. All right, up next, we have Pavement Solutions. Their on application is on the, the actual construction side of this as well, is that right Todd? Not the? All right, so for Pavement Solutions, the NDOT 3P chip and seal application is $1 per square yard. The NDOT 6P chip and seal application is $2.80 per yard. Their optional AEF FOG is 80 cents per square yard.
Total?
Oh.
He's gonna say they have a total.
I didn't see. Insurance, insurance. Not seeing a total. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not seeing a total here in the Pavement Solutions. Nope. All right, up next, we have Asphalt Materials. All right, so the AES 90, or I'm sorry, AE-90S 100,000 gallon is $2.19 per gallon. The AEP-L prime 20,000 is $2.23 per gallon. The optional AEF is $2.11 per gallon. Tanker hourly rate beyond two hours to be billed in quarter hour increments is $150 an hour. Those are for the calendar year of 2025. Calendar year 2026, prices for the AE-90S is $2.78 per gallon. For the AEP-L prime is $2.69 per gallon. The optional AEF is the $2.36 per gallon. Their hourly rate for the tanker remains the same at $150 an hour.
Do they have a total?
I'm going back to look again because these first pages all looked blank to me. Bond. Liability. Insurance. Waiver subcation. I don't see a total. Last one that I have here is Evergreen Roadworks. All right, NDOT 3P chip and seal application is $80, I'm sorry, not $80, 80 cents per square yard. NDOT 6P chip and seal application is $2.25 per square yard. The optional AEF FOG is the 15 cents per square yard. It looks like that's a square yard number. Here we go. The total from Evergreen is $253,050. $253,050.
I don't know. It is, the Pavement Solutions was a dollar a yard and $2.80 a yard versus SC's 90 and $1.94. So no matter how that's calculated, it'll come out.
What about 100 oil? The one didn't have a total.
We gotta calculate the oil through, from between Terry and Asphalt Materials.
Yeah, let's do that real quick and then we can make a decision on that.
I didn't catch the
What do you need?
The asphalt. Asphalt material prices. Yeah, Terry gave us a total, but we need their individuals as well to in order to do it.
So Terry, the AE-90S is $2.19 per gallon. The AEP-L prime is $2.23 per gallon. The optional AEF is $2.11 per gallon. The hourly rate for the tanker past two hours is $150 per hour. Billed in quarter hour increments.
You said that was Terry. That was Terry?
No.
Yeah, that was Asphalt Materials.
That's Asphalt Materials.
Okay. So now this will be Terry's.
All right, so the AE-90S is $2.209 per gallon.
$2.20?
$2.20. Yeah. $2.21 basically, but yeah. The, there was no quote for the AEP-L prime. For the optional AEF was $1.76 per gallon. The tanker rate was $100 per hour.
Is that an incomplete bid? They didn't bid on the AEP-L prime?
Todd?
What was the bid specs? They had to bid on all three of those? The AE-90S, AEP-L prime and the optional AEF? So those are two similar products. The FOG seal.
So the standard that you're putting down is the AES 90? That's the
That's a chip seal.
So that's the majority of the
That, that gallons for the AE-90S, how was that? What was the gallons on that?
It's a, it's 100,000 gallons plus or minus.
What's the gallons on the optional AEF?
There is no. For the, for the prime, Brian, it was 20,000 gallons plus or minus. For the 90S, it was 100,000. There was no gallon.
Any way to compare the, the prime? You're with SC?
Yeah.
Oh, you're with Terry?
With Terry, they did have plus or minus 20,000 gallons. Yeah, I've got them pulled up on here.
Says material certifications, NDOT compliance documentation for AE-90S, AEF and AEP-L asphalt emulsions.
That's under the Section 5 materials, is that where you're looking?
I was originally just looking at one, but that's requesting the documentation, it's not the actual. So I'm now looking at five. But yes, it does say in Section 5 that there's, I'm not sure what the four periods about, but a dust pallet of AEP-L per NDOT, Section 902 gives the application rate and what it's and then there is a FOG seal, AEF approved at .1, .15 gallon spray. Todd, do we normally have tankers sitting there? Does it take us a while to get all the material off the tanker? I'm looking at the comparison of the hourly rate for them while they're sitting there. So is that something that we take the load off and then we have to wait, they have to wait until we can come back and get another one? Well, I know we can't determine that necessarily, but SC did the work before. If they're the lowest bidder now, was there tanker sitting around when SC was doing the work?
They had, they had the tanker parked in a couple of locations depending on what part of the county they were working at. And basically the tanker stays parked. In one particular area, they come back and reload. Then they go distribute the oil and then they come back and refill.
Sure. What I'm getting at is there's a two hour free window, right? And then there's a $100 an hour or $150 per hour past the two hours. So did we experience that the tanker was sitting there all day and we incurred six hours worth of charges? Or did the tank, typically we were done within the two hour window of the tanker? I'm not sure.
Okay.
I mean, for that job, you guys incurred nothing because the contractor was getting his works on the emulsions. So if they were in the merge, they got charged.
Understand.
For this job, and I'll be honest regardless of what happens, I think if SC's doing it, he has storage tankers. We have storage tankers. So the delivery trucks for the emulsion, which is where you pay them in the merge, there should be none. Because they don't have to wait on his distributors, they can automatically unload into his storage tank or our storage tank. And that's the whole reason we supply those is so they can do that and not incur anything.
Sir, who are you with?
I'm with Terry.
Okay, all right, thank you. That, that makes sense what you're saying. What, having a storage tank.
That's why we have these tanks is where we try to get them to utilize some buildings.
Right.
And a lot of times when the county, like Wayne County, we supply Wayne County, this year, we supply them with storage tanks. So when they
materials bid.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, so Chad sent on the Terry asphalt material bid since the prime was not bid. The APL prime was not bid in that bid. Is it complete? Can it be considered?
Well, I was trying to look back through the bid docs on my phone. There was a link to the, over there by self, the pair of.
There you go. It's there and then in the, the bid document that we had been emailed back when we were sending these out. It's mentioned first there towards the top. And. And then again down in five materials.
Yeah, I just don't, I don't know how we function the calculation without it.
No.
Yeah, it was a mandatory part of the spec sheet. Bid request, if it's not bid, it's an incomplete bid. So non-compliant bids have to be rejected.
So then as far as the construction, or I'm sorry, as far as the oil goes, the only bid that we have left then is asphalt materials.
Which was cheaper anyhow on the?
On the 100,000 gallons.
Yeah. More expensive on the tanker. All right, do we have a motion?
Are we doing it, which one first? As far as.
Well, we'll do the oil first with the one compliant bid at this point.
I make a motion to approve asphalt materials for the 2025 work.
I'll second that motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. All right.
And after review of the.
Give me, give me just a second here to look at the numbers so that I can process them real quick here, Gabe. While I was reading them, I wasn't necessarily absorbing them. All right, go ahead.
I do need to see SC's though, for one piece here.
Here's SC.
Yeah, so SC and Evergreen both gave us a total, which helps, but I wanted to physically see those individual numbers again. So Evergreen's total was roughly, you know, 40, 35,000 or somewhere in that neighborhood higher.
37,000.
Yeah, so 200, so SC, and then Pavement Solutions didn't give us a total, but they're at a dollar versus SC's 90. They're at $2.80 versus SC's $1.94. So there's no way that that makeup would.
Right, even if you equal it out, what we're using.
Yeah.
SC's cheaper.
Yeah. So with SC being the lowest bidder, I would make a motion to approve SC for the 2025 chip and seal work for Cedar County.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
Appreciate the information as well. All right, up next, Fairgrounds Project. You guys are on the hot seat now. So what do we need to talk about? Excellent.
Josh, do you want to sit?
Wow, this is fancy. Does Sandy have to turn the microphone on or are we good?
We did have some conversation with the office staff a week or so ago from the extension office and they stopped in. We had went back and forth about concrete versus the VLP on the, in the office area. And I think we settled on VLP in the office area. And then outside of that area was going to be some kind of a finished concrete product. But we didn't, never did decide or make a decision on what type of finished concrete product. And I don't know if you had options on that as well.
So if we go with the LVT.
LVT, that's what it is, sorry.
Yeah, luxury vinyl tile.
Yes.
That would be your options. This is your options for epoxy.
Okay. This is an epoxy?
Yes.
Okay. I don't, I don't have a preference on the flooring as far as color wise. I don't know what we're going to paint it. I don't know.
It's mostly.
I mean, I would go with a, a, a natural wood, something like that versus the grays or tans.
And Levensteins didn't have the actual samples of the epoxy. One of the other contractors had it. So I took those and thought if you had certain areas that you were looking, we'll actually get you true samples.
Okay.
So you'll know exactly what it is.
Right.
Yeah.
We're looking at potential for the epoxy in the main part, right?
Uh, no, that would be the epoxy in the restrooms.
Okay.
The large men's and women's, the family restroom, and the kitchen.
In the hallway leading out of, end of those, from that, that, the doors coming out of the office area into those restrooms.
Okay, so everything under the mezzanine, that hallway? Yes, so I thought, yes, I thought originally what you wanted was an option for everything under the mezzanine to be epoxy.
We talked about that.
Okay.
But I think after discussing, and then Scott had mentioned that this, this flooring. A couple of the extension office people said they were worried about this floor, this floor with rolling around office chairs. And Scott said this, this is what it's meant for.
Correct.
Office, there's no problem with office chairs rolling around on it. So my, my thought was all the offices, this flooring, and then when you come through that door, there's a door that separates the restrooms and the kitchen. From that door forward going towards the big exhibit hall, that would be all epoxy.
Okay.
So you have, you have your walk-in door into the building itself. And then straight ahead, there's another door that goes from that door forward.
The hallway, I think is, we call it 108.
Um, yes, hallway 108.
Kind of an odd, odd shape because it goes around the bathroom. So that would be epoxy.
Yes.
We would epoxy the base of the stairs. And when you open the door up to the stairs, that five by five area, the kitchen.
Right.
The mechanical room, and all three bathrooms.
Yes, all offices would have this.
And the conference room would have that. Yes, okay, so that's what you're leaning towards.
Yes.
Okay.
What about the exhibit area? Is that just sealed concrete?
Yes.
Okay. Not epoxy.
Yeah, no epoxy there.
How much would it be to epoxy the rest of it?
That's what, 80 times 120? Yeah, because that's, that's quite a big.
I would like to see texture out there just because otherwise.
If you spill a drink or something like that.
Water, yeah, if you spill, spill water, you know, the, the potential to fall is so high. So just to help minimize a little bit of risk, it'd be nice to have something with texture out there.
And you knew that was not in the budget.
I know. I, that's, there's a reason I asked how much.
We'll hit you a number on that and, and get back.
Yeah.
And, and, and that can, taking that into consideration, if you have sealed concrete in the main exhibit area, and you put epoxy right in front of the bathroom, there's going to be that visual on. It's not going to be a wall or a door. So I don't think about that too. So if it makes sense to epoxy that whole big area, that would be, that would be.
And as far as the, how much is the LV, whatever, luxury vinyl flooring?
VLT.
Um, we're all in the budget.
Okay.
Either way.
Um, let me ask this, what's the difference in doing that versus epoxy? Is, I'm assuming that's more expensive, correct?
I think epoxy's more expensive. I think it is.
Because the only problem I see with that is there's going to be a step down transition out of every office.
No, the entire office area.
The whole office area is that.
Right, but the hallway.
Hallway as well. But when you walk through this doorway, this doorway, then it goes into that doorway right there. Everything else.
There'll just be a step down transition there.
Yeah, from there and then it's bathrooms, kitchen, staircase, all that.
Yeah, it would just be the one, one transition through that one door. And I think we originally were looking at just sealed concrete in the mechanical room. But since you were going to go ahead and, if we go ahead and put epoxy in the bathrooms, we would go ahead and epoxy that floor in there as well.
That, and if, that's not necessary to me to epoxy that. If there's an added cost to that, nobody's going to go in that mechanical room. Nobody's going to see it.
Okay.
An occasional in there to, to grab something out there from storage, but public will never go in there. So I, it, it, depending on the cost of that, I, that to me, it could just be a sealed concrete floor in the mechanical room.
Yeah, I don't have an issue with that either.
Okay.
I assume it's not very big. That room's not huge.
It's not.
Are you 15 or 15?
I don't know what it's going to, what it's going to, the cost difference is, but we can save some money there.
12 by 12, 15 by 15, something like that.
15 by 15, yeah.
Yeah, it says 14 by 15 here.
I don't, I, I don't care either way on that.
I'm just looking for cost savings.
Right, well, once we started looking at epoxying the whole office, which I thought, and it's like, why would we not continue it under that doors into that one area?
That was talked about for a minute.
Okay.
Until we figured out that we didn't have to worry about this flooring within an office space because that's what it's meant for.
Yes.
Right, so there was just a, a brief moment there we're concerned that this wouldn't hold up in an office space.
Okay, no, it.
Yeah, so we kind of squashed that idea of making it all epoxy.
Okay, and I don't know if you're purchasing new furniture, new chairs in the office area.
We're going to purchase some desks, but I think the chairs we will bring over from the extension office. But we do need to purchase four new desks.
Okay, well, I was going to say they do sell chairs, which actually I have at, at the office. They have like roller blade wheels on them instead of the two wheels. And they're made especially to not damage carpet. So if you were purchase, if that was a concern and you were purchasing new chairs, yeah. But I mean, it would be even better for the flooring, but, but that flooring should be fine.
I would think so, but that's.
The ones that I kind of like, I'm going to look these up because you can't really tell the colors.
I know.
The colors are a little brand.
I, I would like to, if at all possible, neutral grays, browns, I mean, tans, neutral color. I don't think we want to go.
I was thinking fluorescent orange, but just.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
If you wanted us to go ahead and kind of do something like this, kind of lay out some colors.
Color palettes?
Yeah, or if that's something that you guys want to do.
No, you please.
If you just kind of give us a little bit of a direction, you know.
I'll tell you what, I'll, I'll ask Chris Vogel and the ladies in there and let them have a little say in that, the colors.
Okay.
I think that would be good because it's going to be their office space.
Mm-hmm.
So let me ask them, and maybe we can get with them and that color palettes and maybe get some of their thoughts.
Right, like if you're looking grays, blues.
Right.
Tans, greens.
I think that.
White, black.
Yes, I think we should do that.
Okay.
Yes.
Instead of trying to pick from 3,000 wall paint colors, maybe.
I like your, your color palette ideas and putting things together.
And then we could get actual samples of the Cove Base, the epoxy, the flooring, and kind of lay it all out together for you. Okay.
Yes, I like that thought process.
Still on this sheet here, Brian, Gabe had marked one, I, I marked, or I'm sorry, Gabe marked three, I marked two that I like.
We don't need a decision.
I like those.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The only thing on this one down here, I can't tell if that's a blue or a green.
I know, I'm trying to find them online so that I.
That's the only, that was the only one.
If you can kind of get us some, some good samples.
You can see, you can, you'll see what we're.
Right.
Okay, I have a, a request from the extension office for the, the office with the window. When you come in to the front doors, it'd be the office to your left.
Mm-hmm.
There's a counter marked there. Okay, they want to make that an L-shaped counter. So they want the counter to be 18 inches deep, one facing the window. And as it makes its turn, if you're sitting and facing the, the window, as it makes a turn to the right, they want that to be 30 inches deep.
So it can be used as a desk?
Yes.
Okay.
And that, that, that L should come all the way to that, the, the post.
The beam.
That's boxed in.
Okay.
To that beam. Does that make sense, Joe, is that?
That's exactly what we discussed with Chris.
Yes, but they said that, or somebody said that might be a change order, so we just got to make a decision on that, right?
So is that space entirely open then?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So there's, like, because right now they have the studs.
Right.
Where they were going to be, where we could say any size that we wanted. But, so it's, there aren't going to be any studs there vertically. It's going to just wrap all the way around in that space.
It's just going to make an L-shaped counter.
So we aren't going to have like the glass or the roller?
We are going to have a, I don't, I'm assuming a, a glass or a slider for the window.
Okay.
Um, did they mention that?
So they had, they had two different concerns there. They're, they're, they got busy, they will get to be able to prove another idea. And they can, uh, do two service people at one time to a big window. If you do what was in the print, but with the volume slide of the window, you're not able to do that. They had requested that maybe there is a type of window that would slide out though.
Like an accordion style or something?
Just still have two halves, a slide behind the walls and open that whole five foot section.
More like a barn door type.
Okay.
Glass on the inside of the office.
Okay. Sure.
I mean, I'm, I'm okay with that.
I'm good with that. If, if they think that will work more efficiently for them, absolutely. Yep.
There's a floor plan on the third page of that. You were talking about the offices, I thought it would be.
I have it in front of me too.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, does that make sense on the, the countertop?
Yes.
And, and I believe it was a 36 inch height. Is that right, Joe? Yeah, so they want to keep that 36 inch height, but they do want it 18 inches deep in front of the window and 30 inches deep on the right.
Okay, and that's not as critical right now to.
They just want to make sure you.
Yeah, we make sure we have it, but we just don't need to, because it, you know, there's other questions like, does you want it to stick out into the hallway? Not stick out into the hall, you know, but that does not have to be decided now. The flooring was, like I said, more critical because that kind of determined us ordering some of the other things, so.
What are we looking at here for the door hardware then?
Uh, this is just the different office doors. Which function do you want to have? Page two at the bottom, it kind of tells you obviously passage, you know, that's just no locking. Privacy is your bathroom. If you want a storeroom lock to where that door is not able to be open unless it has a key. Maybe the door to go up in the mezzanine.
I'd say add in the mechanical.
And the door into the mechanical room.
Should be those style.
Mm-hmm. And then, um, I'm assuming that all the office doors, we're gonna have to be locked, because if you ever use that building for some sort of an event, uh, you don't want people wandering around, even in that little closet. If you want all the office doors keyed the same, if you want, uh, every individual office to have its individual key. As long as you, we know the function, sometime in the next three to four weeks.
Okay.
And then we'll have it keyed, um, right before we turn it over to how you want it master keyed and all of that.
This will have a, this will have a Knox box as well.
Yes, and it's actually already been installed.
Will, will it have a master key for all the rooms?
We'll, we will have, yes.
Alan has requested one for the front door and then one for the new mechanic.
Okay, I think that's a minimal, so we, they can, they can get into the, the firearm system and.
They'll need to be able to do that every, right?
Yeah, so I was thinking one, one key that'll be in that Knox box, and whomever you guys might determine is the keeper of the community building would have a key that's gonna open every single door.
Yep.
And then it's just, once we get inside the office, kind of how you want it to be keyed.
Makes sense.
The, uh, door ten B, I'm sorry, one hundred B.
Yes.
Um, are we just thinking a passage knob there because of?
I think that needs to be, be able to be locked.
Well, my question was because you have the entry over there, the main entry, into the building there on the west side where we were going to have some of that handicap parking. And so that door will have to be open during events anyways. That's why I think having the locks on the other offices is important.
I, I understand what you're saying now for handicap accessible.
Yep.
Is there any way for handicap accessible into those north and south doors that come into the exhibit area?
I think they're handicap, they're ADA compliant, aren't they?
So that, that's a possibility as well.
They're all ADA compliant, but I mean, that's also still the main entrance into the building over there.
Yes.
Well, most people coming to an event use one of the other doors probably, especially the one under the awning on the south side.
That's what I'm thinking.
That's what I would envision, um, but I couldn't say that folks won't be using.
I, I think I'd, I think I'd like it, so what I think is after hours.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, on a Saturday, and there's an event in the, in the, in the event space, we could lock the whole office area down and lock that ten or one hundred B door, and then those restrooms are available. The staircase would be locked down with a, a key lock, but the, the kitchen could be locked or and or usable during that event space. But then nobody would have access into the, um, office area. That's my thought process with locking that one hundred B.
My only question is, per fire code, do we need that for egress?
I don't believe so with the other, uh, well, you'd have to check, but I don't believe so.
Cause you, you won't be able to count overhead doors.
No, you cannot.
For egress, but for.
You cannot.
Having six hundred, six hundred and fifty people, say we max out an event.
One thing that I know about egress is, is you have to have, egress has to be a push and out.
And that's what this.
But this is going into another area, it's not going into, you got two doors you have to go to get out.
Yes, yeah.
Which is not considered egress.
Okay.
Egress is a, a door and out.
Right.
This is two doors before you get out.
Right, but that's why that door was designed to swing out, was because of fire code.
Okay.
That's why, cause I had asked Scott about having that swing the other way.
Mm-hmm.
Because it's going to be swinging into that hallway, and if you look there at the wall to the men's restroom.
Right.
That would've been a perfect place to have that door swing.
It would.
But in the discussions that I had had with Scott, that door swung into the hallway, uh, on the extension office side because of fire code concerns. So that's a question that we need an answer to, is if, is if that door has to remain.
Unlocked.
Unlocked for.
Egress.
Yep.
It makes sense to me too, just to, uh, well, you could have a push bar on it anyway.
Yes.
You can make it one way, so if you're inside, you can get out.
Yeah.
But I would, it would make sense to me to have all exterior doors and one hundred B keyed the same. Because that way, if you give that key to somebody for an event, that gets them to every outside door plus it inside. And then key all the offices, the stairway, everything like that, to be the same as the offices. That way, the people that are in there every day have that key, and then of course, there's a master for everything.
I like that.
I mean, it.
I'm okay with that.
Cause that would be, if you rented it.
Yeah, cause we want the extension office to be able to get upstairs to the mezzanine.
They, they need access, and if somebody needs a mechanical room, somebody's there and has a key.
For sure, yes.
Yep. I'm good with that.
That's just something for you to.
We just need to fill it out and send it back.
Yes.
We'll do that.
Any other more questions?
Okay, we haven't let your email up at all, so I sure, I'm sure you won't see any of those.
In function again, passage is just no lock, right?
Correct.
Entry is a lock.
Yes, with a key.
And storeroom?
It's an entry that is basically always locked.
Okay, so you're, you're turning the lock to pull the door, but it automatically locks it.
So if.
Got it.
You don't have to worry about somebody forgetting.
The mechanical.
To lock the mezzanine door, and then you've got a wedding and.
Perfect.
Somebody has access to it, so every time.
The door closes, it locks.
Yes, and Dan mentioned something today is, uh, the door into the stairway swings in to the stairway. That we're gonna look at some sort of a floor stop, maybe with a hook on it, so that if you're carrying stuff up and.
Sure.
You know, for an hour, you're carrying stuff up to the mezzanine, you don't have to prop the door open. So we're, so we're looking into something like that, even though it's gonna be closed ninety-nine point nine percent of the time. When you go to use it, if you're using it constantly, you're, you're gonna have a way to keep it open for that.
Good idea.
Then the only other thing that I had is, uh, to make sure that the restroom accessories are on your radar to either let us know what style you're looking for, or if you have a company that's going to take care of that.
So, uh, in the email chain that I've had, um, there was a specific design that was given to Delta faucet here in town, eh, or a number, and that was then passed along.
I didn't see that.
I didn't.
So.
I know there was the chain with Delta on the faucets and the flush valves.
I didn't see any of that.
Where Delta's going.
Is that not what you're?
No, I'm talking about like the toilet paper holders.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
That I saw when you were talking about, uh, you know, who's doing the maintenance or the cleaning.
Right, I know there's like, there's roll towels, there, that come from the outside of the roll, from the inside of the roll, there's seafold towels, there's seafold.
We'll never get to the bottom of that in an argument, you know, which way it goes.
So I just wanted to make sure that, I didn't know if the county supplies all the county buildings, and they probably don't wanna have ten different kinds of paper towels.
Dispensers, right.
Yeah, so we don't wanna get something that's an oddball or.
That makes sense.
Yep, okay.
Okay.
Do you have any other questions for us?
Um, I think we do as far as IT things. I just said, I'm kind of preliminary, I would like to see data jacks out, I did have blades AV out. So we can kind of look and give us some.
I did.
Um, I did, the rep I met, we talked about the two screens instead of TVs everywhere to maybe do two screens on that south wall. But he was gonna come up with, um, some numbers, um. They will do data jacks and stuff like that, they will, they'll sound that out, so thank you. And Scott's looking at, he's gonna have to run the data and stuff like that and run the wires, install data jacks. If you're like, you know, who uses it, it'll probably be behind the back, I don't, I don't know.
You're saying on the north wall, not the south wall?
Right.
The projectors?
Yeah.
No, they're pointing at south, the south wall, I think is what we're looking at that day that we were in there.
The south wall has the overhead door in there.
That's the north wall?
That's the north wall?
Yep.
Turned around.
Yep.
The north wall has a big overhead door.
Okay. I got you, okay.
Yep.
Yeah.
So, yeah, my, I think he was gonna come back with, uh, the just numbers, we're gonna have a couple of options. You know, what else about that, I don't know, you're not on to, so try it, something in there that's simple but effective. And not overly complicated, so kind of once they're, they're, they're extended out there, there's a whole lot to break.
One of the, one of the discussions that we had, Dave, that day that we met up, was, um, the possibility, and maybe not immediately, but somewhere down the road of having key card access at the doors and having, um, some, uh, either touchpads.
Or fobs.
Or fobs, or whatever, to make access into that.
So, um, on that PDF I sent you guys, I, I did mark, uh, like, at least a couple of data jacks at every, at every door, every point of entry. So that was, um, I would necessarily, if you're all the door, but at least you have connectivity back to the back room.
Or re room. Okay.
Required, so if it's gonna head on, then, yeah, you may still have to install a door where, you know, strikes locked, whatever, mag bars, whatever they are.
But at least you have connectivity back.
Or if you even wanna throw a camera on one of those doors at some point, I mean, everywhere asked for one, asked for two data drops, just so we could.
While the, while the doors are exposed now, do we need to install internal strikes? Well, typically, like, the door's ordered that way, so if the door was gonna have, uh, an internal strike for access control, then it would be ordered that way. I'm assuming these weren't ordered that way, so we would have to, we can still get to the, you remember like cutting the, cutting steel frames in for those? So like, we could, we could still modify what's there now, cause it's exposed, versus, you know, once we put a wall covering on, it's really hard to turn it into an internal strike. Which, we can still use the mag locks, but you know, the shit with those, right, I mean, it takes up headroom, it, it's only one center, it's only one top point versus, you know, the center of the door, so.
That would be entirely on, you guys are really willing with that, blades will do access control as well, so.
Okay.
But the doors, they're already in, right, Joe, they're already ordered in.
They're all in.
That's what I mean, but they can be modified now while they're still open to.
I got you.
From the, from the, you can get to the, let's say, outside of the frame, but from the inside of the, because there's nothing over top of walls right now.
Got you.
So you can modify that to put a steel strike in.
Still get in there.
Yeah, versus, I mean, you could always do it later, but you have to rip the wall out.
Right.
Ideally, you do, uh, some point, you can get the security access. You have the place ready, you're doing it, scheduling, the event to be unlocked, the doors to be unlocked from that period of time, then it'll automatically lock.
That's what I like about it.
Of course, there's a cost associated with that, I have no idea what that would be, but that would be, you know, a little more ideal than giving somebody a key and then they leave with it, and you gotta track them down and.
Copies are made.
Yeah. At some point, yeah, I mean, but, you know, the thought of having the data drops next to the doors, you know, and just like, James just said, you know, go ahead and do more, my work done. Just so that if I was about to go at some point in time, you know, at least you have the data drops there to deal with that.
I like that.
Can you, can you dig in to see a little bit more on how much that kind of a system's gonna run, or Charlie, do you wanna look into that? To, okay, so that we can have some of the, that accessibility where we'd be able to actually control it. See what we're looking at there. Um, and then one other thing on the community building, we need to be able, well, what do we need to do to get it so that the microphone for the fairgrounds is in the office? Cause we're gonna be burying those lines anyways.
Or the external speaker.
Yep.
System around the fairgrounds.
Cause right now, it's just from the headquarters building.
Right.
And I know in talking with, like, some folks from Power of the Past, they would like to still be able to continue using the office in the headquarters building for their event.
I've heard that.
And so I know that they would like to have that microphone still work. But I also think that it would be good to have a microphone in the extension office. Either dur, for either during the fair or anything else that's going on out there.
I, I, yeah.
That would be a. I don't know, I don't know if that's, I don't know what vendor, what vendor installed all that stuff out there initially, what the, I don't need to know that looks like.
Okay.
There's any drawings out there, towards how to get back over, do that, or if it's a, you know, gonna be a complete total redesign at some point. But because if certain poles are coming down at some point, I mean, that's gonna be the effect.
Well, I'm, for, for some of our speakers, we would be able to retain a pole, but it's not gonna have the lines.
Above. Underground or some kind of wireless solution or something like that.
Yep, cause we're gonna, we're gonna have to have the poles anyways for some of the lighting.
Yes.
And, and then also for the, the speaker, so we can eliminate every single telephone pole out there, but we can eliminate the, the lines that will be overhead. All right, so we need to get that answer then about how we get to having the microphone in the extension office.
Do you think some of the, um, old fair committee members may know who installed that? Like, some guys ten, fifteen years in the past may have, may know, hey, uh, such and such, put that speaker system in for us.
Yeah.
Maybe.
I think ultimately the amp is, so I mean, this, this may, may, I guess, require a total redesign, cause the amp for all the speakers.
It's there, it's, it's in the headquarters building.
You'd have to home run all the speakers back to somewhere else to have.
Yep.
At some point in time, which is gonna be an absolute nightmare. But that, you know, at that point, I don't know if there's a new tech out there, you know, you have that EPA system. I don't know, I don't, that's not.
Well, it's gonna have to be addressed one way or another with burying the lines.
But I still.
Yep. Yeah, Gabe, I was.
I, I got it more in a visualizer now, so it's a lot easier to see, cause those samples are really hard.
Yeah.
I mean, it's all you have, but you know, you know what I mean, when you look at something that big and then you.
Yeah.
Blow it up into a huge area, then you're like, oh, well, that doesn't look anything like what I thought, so I, there's a room visualizer that Tarkett has, and you can drop those in, so I'm looking at those now, like, send that over.
Yeah, I was, I was from, like, the Golden Oak.
Cut over it.
Over to the Ash, I was.
Any of those would be fine with me.
Those three.
Yeah.
That's where I was at. So I mean, that would've been the Ash.
Hung up on any.
The Laurel Oak or the Golden Oak, those three for me.
Do you guys need to do anything with that, um, generator box or anything like that?
Yeah, I think that was another question, thanks for bringing that up. One of the questions that, uh, Dave also brought up was having a conduit from the inside to the outside and, and having a, um, a way to connect to the, the mobile generator that we, we currently own, and in case of a power failure, that we would have access to be able to hook up to that mobile generator, and then, um, make sure as we're doing that, that, um, the connection is, so it doesn't backfeed into the, the system. And making it a, basically a, a generator connection point for that, and I think that's a great idea, um, have it there just in case, um.
Like an automatic transfer switch?
Yes.
It'd have to be a manual, so it'd be some kind of an interlocked device, so that you can't.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, you can't power, you can't power from both sides.
Right.
Right.
But that way it could be, the warning station, the both sides, something like that, you know, whatever you guys wanna, wanna do. Or group or cons side, something like that.
Yeah, we used to use those on all of our cell sites, that, you know, once you've, one breaker creates the. Yeah, we used to use those on all of our cell sites that, you know, once you hit one breaker, it creates the arm that makes the other one flip.
Right, right.
So.
Exactly. That, that was a great idea.
I think it's fantastic.
And while we've got that, that mechanical room still open, run a conduit and let's, let's make that a possibility, yeah. Does that make sense? I don't know when, when Rosfeld's coming, when Rosco, when they're starting yesterday. That's good. Don't hold them up, just give them another, I think that's something we ought to do. Be able to have a, a transfer switch there to be able to, if we need a backup generator. Hook into our portable backup generator.
Yep. What else? Anything else?
Are you stubbing extra conduit out anyway? Like the one or two, just capped below ground or anything? No?
I don't think they were.
Is it still possible just to do simple stub outs? Like, just like a two inch or maybe, maybe a two, four inches or something? Just stubbed up on the wall on, on C-channel, I cannot think what it's called, but.
LB.
Uh, you know what I'm talking about. Like, you put the clamps on, it slides in, like on pedestal mounting, uh.
I know exactly what you're talking about.
Yeah, like even if it's just something simple where they're stubbed up like two feet, like two, four inch lines that then just go down a 90 out and they're capped under, it can be capped under the asphalt that's going to be there, as long as we know where, you know, it's at. Just a way for us to get through the concrete without having to.
From the mechanical?
Yeah, yeah, just stubbed outside, just so that we have a way to get in through the floor.
Not in the mechanical.
Not in the mechanical room.
Mechanical, too.
Right. Just so, so that we have a way, just so that we have a way to get something through the floor later. And then just cap them.
See, I know, I know Josh had discussed, we're running something for the fiber, you know, tier fiber hidden there. Mechanicals at some point, I guess, we don't know exactly where we need it to land right now, because we don't know exactly where, where the plants is going to.
Coming in.
Yeah, that, that was, there was some, you know, we don't know what they're going to do yet, so we don't know what they're going to do yet. And so, yes, I think so.
The other thing I could do too is I could get you a vault, like to, like a 30 by 48 or something, and a tier 15, just set there. That way, they, they could come into that, that way there's a point we could drill to if we had to. Yeah. Yeah. How soon is that, would that need to be done?
Yesterday.
Okay. And that space on the north side of the building, is that going to be traffic or just parking?
The north side is, I think there is parking and that's where you can.
So if we keep it close to the building, we should be able to get by with tier, tier 15? We'll be at 22,000 pounds and under.
We're going to be keeping it in the flower bed.
Yeah, okay, perfect. Yeah. Okay, so next, if that, that makes it way easier then. Yeah, okay. Um, how, how, what is the dimensions of that flower bed, do you know? The reason I'm asking is it matters how big of a vault.
Well, I think it, I think we've got more.
Okay.
In there, but we, that, that space outside of the chemical room is, is very busy, there's a lot of stuff out there.
Yeah.
So, I think the conduits are something that we could talk about. I'm not sure if we can get another three by four vault out there, something like that, yeah.
And it can be smaller too. I was just thinking for ease, but whatever.
Let us check with Ross Feld and Scott.
Okay.
Make sure we've got enough.
Okay, yeah, I can probably get whatever depth you want. We would just have to drill the holes in the side, but otherwise, I'll try to keep it in a lightweight material, so something that's a polymer resin in a tier 15.
I bet.
Yeah, we can look into it.
Uh, the conversation had come up, and I CC'd you guys on an email that I'd sent to Scott Wednesday night about the drainage off the building.
Yes. Downsouts.
Yep, for the downsouts there, because the, the fair committee is going to work on the drainage on the north side of the livestock building, where we have the hog wash racks at. That area always floods and then runs up into the, where the, the goat barn is at. And so we're going to work on drainage there on the north side, and then that northwest corner of the livestock barn, because water always pools there as well, also from the wash racks. So we're going to work on that drainage there. And so I talked to Brad Schute, who will be doing the excavation work for the downsouts. He's going to get with David Vanderburg to talk about what we're doing on the drainage part of the livestock barn so that we can just run those lines.
To that drainage.
Off the new building, straight to that drainage tile for the, the north side of the livestock barn.
Okay.
That works.
Sounds good.
Anything else on the fairgrounds?
What's on the horizon for us after the flooring and the paint scheme, doors?
Yeah, make selections on the finishes and then decide, some of those things will have allowances in kitchen, audio visual, furniture.
Okay. There is some allowances in there in the budget for furniture and for, okay.
Yeah, I've got, Bridge is working on getting some pricing together on tables and chairs and table racks and chair, you know, things like that.
I'm glad you brought that up, because one of the things that I was wondering about is, is our discussion, we had a discussion about getting the tables and chairs in the exhibit area up to the mezzanine and having them in racks to be able to get them on a forklift or a telehandler or something to get them up to that point. And is that going to be included, are you looking at including some racks for those, that, tables and chairs for that? Or is that something?
I'm, that's, I'm having her price that.
Okay.
We've got a budget for that kind of stuff.
Okay.
Not necessarily a budget for tables and racks individually.
Okay.
We'll take a look and see what kind of meeting we get for.
That's what we're going to need. We're going to need to be able to put those tables in a rack.
Yeah.
Chairs in, in racks and get them up to the mezzanine.
And then I also think when it comes to the, the tables for the event space, we're going to need to consider not just round tables, but also rectangular, depending on the type of event or show that's going on. We're going to, we're going to need a bit of both.
Correct.
I think I went ahead and worked up a quick plan. We just sit like 70 people tables, we did 10 to 12 people per table. It's a, so I figured 10 per table, 500 chairs, you know, for 50 tables, 10 for a regular table to set up food or whatever, you know? And then got the racks for the, for the rectangular tables, the racks for the chairs, the carts or whatever, for all of that. So, because at minimum, you're, if you have 500 chairs, what are you going to do with them? You can't sat them in a corner.
Right. Yeah, they've, they've got to go up to the mezzanine.
Yeah, but they've got to go on some sort of.
They've got to go on a rack.
Yeah.
Yes. A cart, something, yes, yes. Okay, great, thank you. There's not.
No, we're hoping you were going to come help carry them upstairs.
You know that door they talked about leaving propped open, up and down the steps?
That's why the discussion about the, the telehandler, the forklift or something like that has come up. It's something that we would use anyways out at the fairgrounds. And it's something that we could use a lot in this new building.
Yeah. And there should be, I mean, we can add fork pockets to any, we can have it modified to put fork pockets on anything that, you know, is already standard.
It doesn't require a state inspection dealer to buy it.
Right.
Yep.
There's like a 10, 12 foot section of the curb rail.
Yep. Just.
Yeah, not a slide or.
Pull up.
Okay. Good.
Perfect.
All right, we'll just stay in the loop, I guess, as we move forward.
I'll strike the fairgrounds then and move on to Title VI. I forgot to mention earlier when I started the meeting, but Title VI forms are in the back corner. If you'd like to turn one of those into the auditor's office.
All right, so I put together all the.
Thank you, guys.
Title VI.
Thank you.
Uh, I'm sorry, I don't have, I didn't prepare very well. Um, having them all printed, so it's just what I had in my binder here. But everything in there that we need to be compliant with for, what started this was Todd's CCMG with NDOT. Making sure that we were compliant, thank you, yes. And so that's everything that needs to be put into place and that we will do on the website. There's also forms in there that have to be put in with all of the bids. And language has to go with the words to make sure that we are having to do the work.
All right. Uh, I would entertain a motion to go ahead and accept and pass the updated.
Starts there with that pink.
Yeah.
That first one there.
The updated Title VI, Decatur County Title VI non-discrimination implementation policy.
You do that on purpose, don't you, just so that I got to try to repeat everything she said?
I second.
Or Brian does.
You can just say, you can just say I would, I would, I would make a motion to pass what Jeremy just said.
That's what I, I'll make a motion to pass what Jeremy just said.
There you go.
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Mm-hmm, it's on the agenda for next. I believe there's three forms that need signed.
I've got two tabs, yep, there's back two tabs. That other tab on the left is the beginning of the document.
Thank you, sir. May you pass?
I passed.
Congratulations.
I did, see, right there, country.
Oh, there you go!
If I could, if I could make this statement too, we also have to be 88. With Todd, um, he found out that our, our documents have to be updated every three years.
Okay.
He has to say they haven't been. So I have, so we can send in, it's called a B cap letter, which I have prepared and sent it in to give us 90 days. So we have 90 days to get the transition plan for 88 of the day.
Okay.
Working with USI, um, but we've got the B cap letter, because I helped him with the goods and the, or 90 days or so.
Okay. All right, thank you, Doug, thank you, Christie.
So his is every three years, ours is every year, so we will be looking at this and updating that every day.
All right, up next, we have the final commitment letter for CCMG. Decatur County Highway Department will use local road and street funds to support their match for the Community Crossing Grant. State Board of Accounts recently issued a directive allowing counties to use local road and street funds for matching grants. County, I'm sorry, council members agreed to transfer $250,000 from the local road and street fund to local road and bridge matching grant fund. NDOT's portion of the Community Crossing Grant application will be $1 million for a grand total of $1,250,000. And that is for the CCMG 2026. Okay. I would entertain a motion, I don't think I can make this one very long, Gabe, um, just to approve the final commitment letter for the CCMG 2026.
I'll make a motion to approve the final commitment letter for CCMG 2026.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Anything else, gentlemen?
I do not.
Anybody else have anything, Jennifer? Okay. Yeah, that's fine.
Nothing else? All right.
Anybody else?
What was it? We could.
All right, well, I would entertain a motion to recess.
Uh, so moved.
Second.
We are recessed.
Thank you. Um, I don't know if you guys have time.